Brown Act Remote Meetings. Welcome, everybody. And we'll call a meeting to order. I would like everyone to stand, face the flag. I think we're gonna have a flag on the screen. If you don't, turn towards whatever flag is closest. And Mr. Bishop, could you lead us in a pledge, sir?
All right, please stand, put your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, indivisible, indivisible, but liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
We're getting better at this.
I'd like to remind everybody that has chimed in on the, what we do in Zoom today. Okay, to, or if you're on the phone, please mute your phone or mute the speaker on your computer, your mic on your computer, so that otherwise we get weird feedback and we start hearing the same thing three or four times and it never ends. So, I know sometimes it seems like these meetings never end, but we're gonna try to get through it anyhow. Okay, City Clerk, so could we do roll call and indicate what members are present and ones are participating electronically?
Correct. Mayor Hoffauer?
Here.
Mayor Protan Loa?
Here.
Electronically?
Thank you.
Councilmember Bettencourt?
Here electronically.
Member Correa?
Here over the phone.
Councilmember Bishop?
Here.
Thank you. So, we have public agenda comments received on presentation items today. So, we have number 5.1 on public safety. And then we had non-agenda items and then, I'm sorry, we have non-agenda items. We have public safety and some direction on alcohol regulation issues. We have, Mr. City Manager?
Mayor, we have a public comment, non-agenda item from Diane Clay Mesa. We can receive and have the clerk put it on the internet tomorrow. It's almost a four-page letter.
Okay, everybody's gotten copies of it here, so that'd be great. Okay, and do we have any, any public comment on item 5.1?
We do not.
Okay, and then on 5.2, do we want to take the public comment on that now as well? Do we, do we receive anything on that?
We did. We have a staff had a meeting with Mr. Flores last week, last Friday. He has, I spoke with him today. He has submitted an email. Every council member has a copy of that and I have given a copy to the clerk, which can be put in the file and online tomorrow if you'd like, or...
Very good. Okay, thank you. So, who's handling the 5.1? Mr. Miller?
Mr. Miller will come up. Mayor, I would, I would just say we are sensitive to this time and the COVID, but we also have to continue government. And this is what we had planned for the public safety update. So, we thought it was prudent for Mike and his staff and the captain to come and let the public hear all the good things that are going on in our community. So, with that, we're gonna try to keep it brief, but Mike's gonna come up and say a couple words.
Well, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. The presentation this evening focusing on public safety and the progress that we've had since we reported to the council about a year ago on this same subject. Oh, okay, thank you. So, over the past six years, the department has really been focused, almost seven years, on really engaging the community and bringing down the crime numbers. And it's been a major goal. It's been a real team effort with our residents, partners in the community, and trying to make things come together and to communicate the real, the real message of public safety. Those four areas that we cover are public safety programming and outreach, community compliance, community-oriented policing, and community partnerships. But one thing that's really important is we've moved through this phase of seeing our crime numbers go down and more engagement in the community has truly been the support of our council. I can say that since we started this effort, when you look over the years, that when we've come to our city council and talked about being creative, you've really allowed us to be able to do that and to communicate what's important to you and sharing what you hear from the community and we've been able to make that happen. So, it's been a great team effort. We appreciate the support. And I'd like to bring up Carrie German now to cover the public safety portion of our presentation.
Thank you, Mike. Carrie, don't make this font so big. I can almost read it.
We had so much, we have so much to brag about and I just couldn't get it all in on one slide in mayor council. Again, it's all about community and partnerships and that's what we're focusing on. So, with the partnerships between our residents, the businesses, public safety entities, the sheriff's department, and all of our community partners, we're really looking forward to another successful year in reducing crime and doing outreach. For Neighborhood Watch and Crime-Free Multi-Family Housing, otherwise known as our PAC program, those roles continue to be very important. We're kind of shifting gears a little bit right now with the Zoom meetings and trying to accommodate those where we can do the actual physical outreach to them. So, we're, we are again focusing on both single-family and multifamily neighborhoods. Social media, we've had our public safety Facebook page for a while, but we recently got on board with a public safety Instagram and a public safe, public safety was already taken apparently, Twitter pages. So, now we're reaching even more and more of our residents. We, I just checked our public safety Facebook page and within just two weeks, we gained a hundred additional followers, which is, which is really nice. So, it's a lot more getting, getting our message out. Business engagement, we're kind of revitalizing our business watch program and we've added the motto of because business matters. As part of our new outreach strategy, we are continuing with our Anlo Valley organized retail crime meetings. And those are where we engage some of our, if you would refer to them as our big box retailers, so that they can share information that they would not be able to do otherwise based on some of their policies and procedures. And it gets them one-on-one with our detectives from our retail that are handling some of the retail crimes, so that they have a better understanding of what's going on. So, that's been highly successful. And then our community service officers, they take those assigned reports from the station that help keep those deputies out on patrol. So, they're a huge help with that. In addition to that, they patrol the city-owned properties, act as a visual deterrent. And just recently, we were able to get them updated technologies so that they can go out and have a handheld printer and start addressing some of the citations and addressing some problems in our neighborhoods in addition to what they already do for the sheriff's department. Thank you. You want to go back? Okay.
If I could go back, Carrie did talk about our CSOs, but also too, a point that staff would like to bring in, a thank you to the mayor councils, the support that we have through our staffing. We have a very unique team that we've put together, as Carrie mentioned, of our community service officers. But also, our neighborhood compliance officer program is very unique because it allows us to go seven days a week. Our public safety officers are out in the parks, the civic center area, and we've seen the great work that they've done since we've had the COVID issue come to our town. And then our code enforcement officers who are out there seven days a week as well. And then to also mention, our city attorney's office is very supportive of what we do and that segues into Sarah Gallagher's area, that the CAO is working with us on a daily basis. And an important part of the compliance is that the priority with council being that of nuisance abatement. And so, the staff has also enjoyed that support and being able to go out there and to be able to do the right thing in our community. So, if we could have Sarah come up and present her division now.
Good evening, mayor council. Mike pretty much stole most of my thunder, but I'll bring in a little extra. The community compliance division continues to actively strive to improve the quality of life with the community to protect its property assets by enforcing the municipal codes, zoning ordinance, California vehicle code, and other applicable state laws. The community compliance division consists of three separate divisions. Our code enforcement, neighborhood compliance, and public security office. Combined between the three of them, they address over 4,000 complaints a year. Those complaints involve anything from illegal dumping and graffiti on private property, property maintenance, vehicle violations, our keeping kids safe, school zone program, and many, many more. We, oh, go ahead, yes.
Just for clarification, so, so people in the neighborhood don't think that our guys don't patrol around looking for this stuff because they're primarily complaint-driven, correct?
We're about 98% reactive.
Yeah, so, so when, so when people send me an email about a, that they got a parking ticket or that how come we don't know about this dumping, generally the response is, you know, somebody's gotta report it. And that's, that's how the parking thing gets either addressed or the dumping gets logged.
Primarily, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, with that, I wanted to kind of add, we have a total of four code enforcement officers and they're spread out over seven days a week. So, we do have seven-day-a-week coverage, but it is limited with the four bodies. The same with our community compliance division. We've got nine part-time officers who are spread out over seven days. And the public security officers are also, some of that staff is 24/7. So, we've got a small and mighty little force that's covering a lot of territory and a lot of time. But yes, 98% of what we respond to is reactive. While we are responding to those complaints, we try not to turn a blind eye on other things we see along the way and whatnot. We're working with IT right now to secure a code enforcement-specific database. We're really excited about that. It's going to help streamline our process significantly. It'll provide a better response and more updates to the complainants when they call the complaint into us. It kind of lets them know we're still actively working on this or the case has been closed. That's a lot of big push that we get from the residents, you know, that a lot of our follow-up calls are wanting to know the status. In addition, we just recently were awarded and accepted a second tobacco grant in the amount of 362,000. That funding is available to us July 1 of 2020 through June 30 of 2022. So, we're excited about that.
Outstanding. Now, how many, what, what categories for, I think I know the answer, but I'll let you tell me. What categories are able to write things like, probably the most common complaint I get is handicap parking? So, what category of our officers have got the legal authority to write the parking citations in a handicap?
So, our neighborhood compliance officers, our code enforcement officers, and as well, we've added Carrie's community service officers, the ability to do that from our electronic software as well.
Great.
The only one that can't is the public security officers.
The PSO.
Oh, yeah.
Great, okay. Yeah, 'cause I know that's probably the most annoying one that's out there. Having dealt with, you know, handicapped family members and, and then just seeing the, the problems that people have trying to, trying to get people in, you know, in and out of a car, that, that can be difficult, so... Drew's out there. Can you get the... Thanks.
That was all I have unless you have any further questions.
Okay, hold on. Bishop, you got anything on this?
Nope.
You're good, okay.
Anybody on?
Mr. Loa, anything for Sarah or for Mike?
No, I just, just my thanks, very thorough job. I appreciate it.
Okay. Laura?
Oh, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Correa?
I just want to say thank you for all the work you guys are doing with all these code enforcement officers. I know that it's, it's very stressful and all the complaint-driven cases that file up. I'm impressed with the work that you guys are doing. Thank you for doing that.
Very good. Okay, I think that, Mike, that, that sums up the civilian staff, correct?
It does, and now our headliner, our station captain.
Okay, you guys were the warm-up act?
We're the warm-up act, but I just want to say before the captain comes up, our station or deputies are fantastic to work with. They're super responsive. And I can say for our captain, it's 24/7. He communicates so well to us and we really appreciate that because when council does have a concern, it's nice to know that we have a captain that's so responsive.
Mike, Mike, sorry, can I, can I ask Mike something? I just wanted to see if you can talk from the graffiti activity. Is that something that you can give us some updates on, or Sarah?
Well, yeah, I, I can just share with you, we're constantly searching after the offenders and we do have a pretty good track record of arrests. And sometimes it's not exactly who you would think it would be out there doing it without giving too much away. But I would say that our station has a very effective manner in which they do track down the people who are committing it and, without saying too much more, Captain, I don't wanna...
Since the, since the, the COVID situation or the COVID pandemic, have you noticed a difference in any type of the situations you're dealing with out there and with code? Has there been an increase in certain things or a decrease?
Come on up here so those guys can hear you.
Because I've seen a little bit more, I've seen a little bit more graffiti. I've seen a little bit more dumping trash around the streets. Have you noticed?
A few more thoughts on the, on the crime blotter, you know?
Yeah, so what have you, what have you experienced in the last month or two on your end?
We've seen a little bit of an increase in that and we're trying to be very careful how we address these. You know, a lot of, we still need to balance our enforcement, but be respective, respectful to those, you know, when they're, we're issuing citations still in parking sites and giving them an opportunity for an extension for payments. But we have seen an increase in graffiti on private property. I have had some conversations with a graffiti detective who said it's a little more challenging for him to respond to them with all the kids being out of school. So, he's lost that main contact and communication with the school principals and whatnot, who usually can put those kids together with who's doing what. So, we're struggling a little bit with that.
But really, at the end of the day, the key is that we have a couple of different tools. The 94 Pride Line, we have the webpage, and, and, you know, there's different tools out there to get this stuff reported because, you know, it's frustrating from everybody's standpoint that somebody says, you know, there was something on this garage in the back of this building and it's been there for two weeks and why haven't you done something about it? Well, what's your, what's your case number?
Yeah.
What do you mean? When did you call it in? When was it reported? And I can follow up. And quite often, we find out that, you know, they, I don't know, it just didn't get reported or something like that. So, everybody watching, call it in, call it early, call it often.
Yeah, and I'd like to add, we do have for victims of graffiti, we have paint gift cards, $25 gift cards from Dunn Edwards. So, when they are a victim of graffiti, we're, and we have rolling pans and paint brushes and we've got these tools to provide to them so that money's not an issue to take it down. So, we do have that as well.
Okay, have you noticed a decrease in any type of calls since what's going on? Because it's a different world out there now.
It's a completely different one.
So, I would expect your department to have a shift in the type of activity that goes on.
Yeah, it hasn't really slowed down. It's, it seems more our calls have increased lately. People are home, they're noticing things a little more than they used to before.
Yeah, our email's blowing up too, trust me. We know that. Yeah.
They're really upset that their cars, that the streets are filled with vehicles and why aren't they moving and why aren't we enforcing the 72-hour rule? But again, that's where we're trying to find the balance of being respectful for the situation, but also maintain...
Did that, did that?
I have a question for Sarah.
Yeah.
Are they still doing the Adopt a Wall program or are we just...
Um are we still doing the adopt a wall program or are we just continue that one?
The adopt a wall program is with Trish Jones and the volunteers now and. There's not a whole lot of activity there, but I think Kerry will be able to provide a little more details.
Okay, thanks. And hello, Captain.
Hello.
Long time no see.
Indeed, we miss you.
In regards to the adopt a wall program, yeah, that is now following under um the uh the community programs. Uh we are still encouraging people to adopt those walls if they have specific incidents in their neighborhood where they constantly see the same wall. Where we can provide them with the color matching paint and that type of thing. We had so much success with it, it actually came to a point where we even stopped doing our graffiti cleanups because. We were asking Public Works to find locations that were, you couldn't really see from the public right away. And don't clean that up immediately because we need to have some graffiti to clean up for these these events. And we haven't been holding those events because the graffiti has been. I don't wanna say minimal, but we haven't had the problems that we saw uh, you know, five and six years ago. Our adoptable program, the participants have um kind of slowed down a little bit. Um and again, it's because so much of it is is things that our Public Works crew is is. Keeping up with and because it's on on private or excuse me, on public property. And we do reach out to those individuals that may live in those areas where their private property is continuously uh tagged. And we work uh just as Sarah had said, with providing them with the tools and the materials that they would need to be able to clean that up without a cost to them.
Thank you.
Okay, count it to five, you're on.
Very good. Good evening, it's a pleasure to see you again and to give you an update on where we were in two thousand nineteen and where we're going in two thousand twenty. In two thousand nineteen, I developed a strategic plan for Palmdale Station, had three simple goals, reduce crime, partner with the community and inspire our employees. The crime trend, we were, we finished the year about five percent down. And uh through surveys statewide and nationally, Palmdale was recognized being sixteen safest city in California. And the forty-fourth safest city in the nation, which is a testament to how Palmdale's run and we're glad to be a part of that. So we also strengthened our partnerships with the city, the Neighborhood Services Program and also through county. By developing a youth diversion program. It's with the L A County Department of Public Works and it's also with a local community-based organization called uh Solidad Enrichment Action. Then obviously, the activities have slowed us down as we kick this thing off, but it will go full force in twenty twenty. Uh our our cadre of personnel at Palmdale Station truly are amazing. It's some of the best deputies. And the sheriff's department along with the professional staff, I'm proud to be a part of this team. We got forty-one new partners this year with trainees coming in two thousand nineteen, so we took care of our staffing shortage issues. But on the other side of it, we had twenty-three of them promote out, which again is a testament to our personnel and the capabilities they have countywide. We uh also promoted a sergeant to lieutenant and a deputy sergeant, and we're excited to see them grow in their career. And that's all part of the inspire our employees.
Uh that that makes a huge statement when your people promote. And you, again, you you uh, it's tough to lose them.
Yes.
But if if everybody in that chain wasn't doing their job, the 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 chain would never change, so.
Uh you are correct, and and many of our personnel uh were somewhat removed from the basin where a lot of activity takes place for the sheriff's department. Uh many of our personnel live out here, so they are engaged in the community. And it's it's hard to put a commute into your daily work and to get people to move and and experience something else. But it does benefit us when they do move, they do get experience someplace else and they're able to bring that back. And we're starting to see some of those personnel who promoted out, they're promoting again and coming back to us. And again, they can invigorate us and uh make sure we're doing best practices, and that's something we strive for. On the community policing front, uh obviously, again, the pandemic operations have slowed everything down. But uh uh with eighty percent of our personnel assigned to Palmdale Station living here. They're engaged in community policing all the time, cuz they leave work, they're going to same stores, same churches, same schools, same after-school activities. So they're always engaged in community engagement. But even though we got the safer-at-home order in effect, a lot of what what we would have been doing so far this year, we haven't been able to go out full force. We're engaging in other ways. There are many children in our communities that had birthdays, uh birthday parties canceled and things like that, and we're reaching out to them and driving by and. And putting that sort of stuff out on our social media so they see that we're engaged. Uh touching base with the seniors, dependent adults, to make sure they're not being left behind too is very important to us and so we're engaging those. Uh as soon as this thing lifts and we able to get back to the new normal, uh we will continue to do our coffee with a deputy, dinner with a deputy. Uh town hall meetings, school programs and the like, and and we're looking forward to it. We finished two thousand nineteen with uh about two thousand nine hundred and thirty-five part-one crimes. And that's the barometer we use across the nation to ma- measure city to city and how their crimes bear out. Uh what challenged us most was homicides rates, rapes, robberies and aggravated assaults. And uh January kicked us off in two thousand nineteen with a with a triple murder. It was a drug-related thing, people came from outside of Palmdale and they came into the town to do some evil business, a- and that's what we were saddled with. Uh thankfully, this year we didn't experience such a travesty. Rapes too, it that's an unusual uh phenomenon, I keep saying that we don't have stranger rapes. If there's such thing as a good rape, there not. Uh but these incidents that are being reported is the suspect and the victim are acquaintances. They either had a previous dating relationship or tragically uh it was family business.
Are you, are you attributing this to better education and a better understanding by uh uh by folks in the community that? Um you know what, when I say no, tha- that's what I meant.
Uh the way many of the reports, and I read the reports to to make sure we don't have any of these stranger incidents. You don't have somebody breaking into a house for the purpose of rape is what I mean by stranger rape.
Right.
Um and as I read these things, people are meeting on social media, they're meeting for the first time, they're going out. Uh tragically, they're ingesting alcohol or drugs and the next morning we have a crime report being reported.
Oh, okay, alright.
Um so we're we're having to deal with a lot of that, we are trying to get out and and get the me- message out via social media. Is uh, you know, meet and get acquainted with people uh before you start engaging in habits that might inhibit your ability to. Defend yourself.
Right.
And those things.
Thank you.
So uh robberies too, uh what we're finding is uh the social, the uh online apps let go, things of that nature offer up. Uh people are are engaging in commerce and then they're meeting at a non-public place. And then it turns into a robbery, uh person takes.
We finally got the county council to let us uh install that uh safe exchange area at the station, is it being utilized?
We have that there and the whole point behind that, and we do advertise it, we put it on our social media sites.
But isn't being used?
It gets used, limited, and that's where our problems were coming from, is people would not come to the station and use it, but it's available. It's under light, it's got a camera, it's under public view, quick response, those kinds of things.
Somebody who's looking to uh do something not so legit, might not be inclined to do it. Outside the front door of the sheriff's station, huh?
Exactly.
Okay.
So that's where some of our our robberies have come from and um. Uh again, we're we're trying to get the message out on social media, don't do it. The service is great, the resource is great. But you need to be prudent about how you go about that business. The aggravated assaults as well, what we're finding is a lot of them are domestic violence, but we did have thirty gang shootings this past year. And our gang detectives, they are spectacular. Um they've solved twenty-one of those thirty shootings and the other nine that were not solved, that's due to the victims being uncooperative. So they just didn't provide the detectives with the information, didn't wanna talk and uh and that's where we're at on those aggravated assaults. Uh twenty-one, twenty-twenty started off a bit poorly, and January, our crimes were up thirty-four percent, those same part-one crimes. Uh we were dealing with some of the same issues with the exception of homicides, uh but the rapes, the robberies, the aggravated assaults. Um burglaries too were causing us a great deal of challenge. Um calls for service are down, our observations are up, we have deputies out there doing the high visibility patrols. Checking out the businesses, we're having them check out other places too, businesses that might be scuttled or closed. We're having them go by there and make sure nothing bad is happening in those places. As the, as the weeks go on, our crime rate has dropped, so we're now down to being plus twelve versus the thirty-four. So we're headed in the right direction and I anticipate being below that twenty-nine thirty-five number for the year. At least that's what I'm shooting for for this year. As you see, the crime trend over the last five years has been, we've been on that downward trend with last year being one of the best years that we've had. Being under two hundred is great, part-one crimes per ten thousand, and we're looking to drive that down further, and it's with the help of the community. We do have a wonderful community out here, they are engaged and they're, they don't hesitate to call us when issues come up. Uh in fighting the crime, I've put a big push on traffic enforcement. Because uh people do drive fast out here, our primary collision factors are speed and fairytale yield. Uh people, it's a commuter community, they're driving to the basin for work, when they come home at the end of the day, they're beat and they're used to driving freeway speeds. They get onto our roadways and they're continuing to drive those freeway speeds, and I don't know if you've noticed it, if you're out about nowadays. Uh they're still driving fast and there's not as many cars on the roadway, so if there's a way we can monetize that into a NASCAR track. I don't know, Sierra Highway to Avenue N- N to Tenth, well, you know, it'd be great, it might uh.
So on that point, um I've in our um interactions with some other cities. They're having their lights retimed to force these stops. Uh I think it's gotta be determined whether or not they're, it's actually slowing them down or whether they're speeding faster between the lights. Can we ask traffic to take a look at that, so in the interim, while these streets are wide open? Uh it's like you say, I mean, I, coming back up forth from City Hall today. Um not to pick in any particular car, but man, there were a lot of Hondas and a lot of Challengers out there just hauling today. I I don't know what the deal is, if they just think it's it's uh free-for-all time, but uh it it's kind of ridiculous out there, I'm getting a lot of calls about it.
Yeah.
I'm just telling them to call you guys, you know?
Absolutely, and uh you know, instead of just relying on our traffic deputies to en- enforce those speed laws, we're trying to get everybody. All of our deputies to become a traffic deputy and enforce those.
Every, every car's got a ticket book in it, right?
Absolutely.
Outstanding.
And it's it's reeducating the public, that's that's a big concern about safe driving, right? So we had.
And that, and 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 clearly, everyone they stop doesn't get a ticket, a lot of it has to do with the interaction that occurs. As a result of that stop, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So uh.
Hint, hint, but go ahead.
Yes, uh fatalities, we had fifteen uh fifteen crashes with with eighteen deaths. And that's why it is really a big issue for us that the the motoring public needs to be reeducated on driver safety. When you leave from home, when your beloved leaves from home, you expect him to come home at the end of the day, and if they don't. Whether it's from somebody trying to rob him or they lose their life in a traffic collision, it's the same, the loss is just as great. Uh but we did have some great success with with uh improving our traffic enforcement efforts. Our citations went up about seventeen percent, our crashes went down about three hundred over last year. Uh our fatalities actually stayed the same, but the number of collisions went down. And it's unique, it's not something you can genuinely uh have a crystal ball and say how many you're gonna have. You're just trying to make them all go down so that people are safer when they get out there, and our, the number of crashes went down. Uh our DUI enforcement went up, the number of DUI crashes went up just slightly. But again, the number of injuries from those DUI crashes went down, which is a positive.
How are, how are we looking with uh impaired driving with cannabis now?
That's a challenge for us cuz there is no admin per se law like there is with alcohol.
Right.
Uh which means it's really the officer's uh ability to detect that driving behavior and then make that assessment that they were under the influence. Uh it's going through the court system, even in Colorado, you know, they're having challenges, and Colorado's been around for a long time. With their DUI enforcement and how do we get that through the court system to where a jury hears the evidence and understands it and then come, can come away with a verdict. Uh as soon as some of those things get a a scientific basis to it, that you'll see it start sweeping the nation. And various uh state assemblies will start making laws so that it's enforceable.
I agree, sir.
So uh we're happy about the traffic enforcement efforts that we made this year, we've seen some great improvements. We also had our traffic sergeant retire this year and we've converted that over to uh another deputy to be on a motor. So now we got five motors that are out there, along with all the other deputies working the station and provide enforcement. For twenty twenty, our goals are the same, we wanna reduce the part-one crimes by ten percent. They told me that was a big number last year and I agree, it's a big number, but it's what we're shooting for, we wanna see improvement in the community. Uh we wanna continue enhancing our traffic enforcement because there's a lot of room for growth there to make sure everybody's safe. Uh I think that's something that would go into uh economic development and the advertising of Palmdale. Crime's going, going down, but I know employers are gonna want their employees to get to work safely, and that means they gotta drive there safely. And then we wanna implement, uh continue to implement our community-oriented policing and problem-oriented policing to address all the issues within the community. Uh and uh enhance our community partnerships, there are a lot of community-based organizations out there, they're passionate about Palmdale. They have something that can provide service to the people that we interact with that doesn't necessarily rise to the level of a crime. And and they can be of great benefit to the people that are here. Uh and again, engage with the groups and uh work with the city for all of the. The non-crime and nuisance issues, improve the quality of life here in Palmdale and enhance our social media outreach. Uh we got a new uh P I O and uh she's doing a great job with advertising Palmdale Station, so we're very excited about that. Do you have any questions for me?
Uh yeah, what's uh, what's patrol been like for the deputies since the stay-at-home order? So have you guys noticed a difference?
What, what is doing what?
What's the, what's patrol like for the deputies since the stay-at-home order has been put in place?
The number of calls have have gone down, uh but we are finding there's more family-oriented calls that we're going to. Uh people are locked down in the same house, traditionally, we get three good days out of them, they they can cooperate for three good days. And after that, they start getting on each other's nerves and and uh that's part of how we get to go in council, so.
Little bit more of the domestic stuff, um.
Yes, yes.
There's resources out there in the community, we have some links on our page for that, uh there's, there's lots of places out there for uh for uh. For someone to make a call and and maybe help talk you through some of these these stressors. It's a, it's, it's, I can tell you, I'm seeing it just in the tone of a lot of the calls and emails I get, you know? So it's a, it's, it can be tough, people are stressed, people are having problems bec- monetarily because of, you know, with the, being out of work. And then uh now they're sitting at home and with another stressed person, so, yeah.
You know, and and that's absolutely the truth, you know, we, we do a disservice to ourselves raising our children fairy tales, you know, you think, yeah, you need. Uh you run off happily ever after, and it's not that way, it's work, marriage is work, it's just like anything else, it's work. And you've gotta know how to communicate through those challenges, you know, and if you get challenged, you grow. And that's just natural, so add those other stressors on there about job and businesses and things of that nature. And they don't know how to communicate their fears and and how are we gonna get past all this, it it does make it very, very difficult.
Getting out and just taking a walk can help a lot.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so.
Well, I appreciate uh you and what your deputies do to keep our city safe, I think you're doing a tremendous job and we're all very safe. Uh because of, because of you and the department and and uh and just thank you, I know it's uncertain times right now, but. It's because of our sheriff department doing a good job does mean we can retain a certain level of quality life within our community, so thank you.
Well, I appreciate that.
How's our guys, how's our deputies and civilian staff? Uh um with the um um with with the with. The the, are they getting tested, are they, anybody come, what are we looking at with their three exposure rates?
Uh I go to the briefings, I I talk to the personnel, I know my supervisors, talk to the personnel. And uh just verify with them, I mean, it's one thing, you come to work, how are you mentally, how are you? Are are you okay with what we're doing and how we're protecting you, is there something else that we can provide you to make sure you're safe? Uh but I'm telling you, our our staff are very resilient and their families are backing them up a hundred percent. They're just as resilient, uh able to communicate with them and and make sure everything is good. That you don't have the fear of you're out there working all day long and you're gonna come home and infect the family. And just like the rest of the community, they got some issues taking care of elderly parents or compromised immune systems. So their concerns, but they're finding a way to work it out.
Homeschooling.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, so uh uh they're.
Oh, we, we haven't, we had any of the, any of our deputies or civilian staff up here uh that have uh converted to positive uh testing?
No.
We've been good, cuz I know the sheriff just does kind of give aggregate numbers when he does his reports for us.
Yeah, I, I think that's one of the things that makes the Alamo Valley so wonderful is we're not stacked on top of each other, we don't have that population density. Like you're finding in other places that are compromised. like you're finding in other places that are compromised, LA, San Francisco, New York, those kinds of things, we are spread out, people are being mindful. And uh, we're not experiencing, it doesn't mean we drop our guard, we're still careful, making sure we're sanitizing. Again, community partners have really come out to help us out, we've had a lot of people provide masks to the department. Uh, hand sanitizers that they were able to make. Uh, Camacho Auto came over and sanitized our fleet with a, a very neat steam machine that uh, disinfects the inside of the cars, that goes a long way towards helping our employees feel good about getting out there and contacting people.
I know they're, I know they're being safe, because uh, I stopped uh, at a disabled, an elderly lady was disabled. And I know the deputies that showed up, they were very uh, cognizant of maintaining those, those distances, but and I gotta tell you, I, I sent you that, I sent you uh, an email about them, they did an outstanding job. That, that, that lady was like eighty-five years old and ended up on a, up over a curb, and was stuck there. But I tell you what, their calm demeanor, and you know what, we're gonna make it good, uh, and then when the traffic guy showed up, uh, he was, he was an ace, I tell you what, so the guy, uh, the, the folks are out there uh, do- doing a great job on this.
They are, uh, again, I am impressed with the staff, the professional staff, along with the sworn staff and supervision. They're engaged in the community, and they are a part of the community, and it's a wonderful thing. And the success you alluded to is really, stems from the city, the support we get from the city manager, all the staff, council. It is amazing, yeah, I'm very proud of this opportunity to be here, and I, I really enjoy it, so thanks very much.
It's gotta be great being the skipper of a station where you have so many of your people live in, within a community, and you have so many um, uh, law enforcement, fire and related people that, that, from other communities that, that live up here, uh, and they have those resources, because I know when we we've had a couple of incidents go down, I've had people say, why did the FBI and ATF and everybody else get there so quick? I said, it's your neighbors, you know?
Exactly.
Yeah, so.
And, and our personnel realize that when they're interacting with them too, so that, that makes a big difference.
Great, uh, let's um, and as they say, let's go to the phones, uh, Richard, you have anything? For the captain?
Uh, Captain, I wanna congratulate you, um, I, I was particularly impressed with the point that you made that uh, when crime goes down, when homicide rates go down, when fatal traffic accidents go down, we're actually talking about lives saved and uh, and families that uh, you know, are going to continue enjoying their, their friendship and their relations, so I thought that was a great point, and uh, you guys are doing a fantastic job, I appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Loa, Ms. Benton Court?
I'm here, I just wanna say that, um, you know, I've been with the sheriffs almost twenty-five years now, and I'm just so proud to be a member of Palmdale Station. It's got such a good crew there, and I'm just really glad to be part of it, I'm very proud.
Our crime analyst is at the tip of that spear, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am, Mr. Creo? So, no, apparently, okay, alright.
Captain, I just wanted to say, I appreciate the invite of having uh, staff and council attend some of your functions as well, I think we've been able to do that mutually and attend those things, and I think that's important in building, yeah, the relationship, and uh, I just was texted uh, from my daughter, who's a college student, who let me know one of the, I, I guess if you can look at it a pro, but this is the first March in eighteen years that there hasn't been a school shooting because of the coronavirus. So, you put that in perspective, and maybe what the future looks like in terms of virtual schooling and so, uh, thanks for everything you do and your, and your team.
Thank you very much, and we did get, uh, we just got four new watch commanders at Palmdale Station. And uh, we're going through a sergeant promotional process where they should announce some new sergeants, and we're looking to get some more uh, personnel, and, and I've got people that want to come to Palmdale. They've heard about the station, they heard about the great community, and so people are starting to look forward to coming up here and working, so that's, that's very exciting.
I, I get that grief at liability trust fund when some of the other communities say, you know, why are we stealing all their guys?
Yeah.
You need to fix your captains, I don't tell you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Cap.
And uh, Mr. Loa made an outstanding point, so this is not about numbers, whether we're talking about uh, crime stats, whether we're talking about fire incidents, whether we're talking about EMS, it's not numbers, these are people. These are, these are somebody's loved one, so, great point, Mr. Loa, thank you. Okay. Go ahead, sir.
No, I just said you're welcome.
Okay.
Appreciate it, huh?
Yeah, there's a little bit of a delay that goes on here, and it, we're all still working through it, so, okay, uh, Mr., well, Mr. Miller?
I, I wanted to say something before we even, even start five point two. I would, I would be up for making a motion to tabling this or postponing it till later date. Just because of the, what's going on right now with the stay-at-home order and the Corona nineteen pandemic. I think having a discussion about alcohol regulations and uh, putting limitations and more regulations on businesses at a time like this is not a good idea, I think the discussion we should be having would be about how to reopen the businesses or creating a plan of how we're gonna emerge from this, and how we're going to uh, make a plan for our city coming out of this pandemic and this stay-at-home order. But I think having a discussion right now, um, about, I see in this email here, sent to me about disallowing any more liquor stores, or asking for an exemption for convenience stores and so on and so forth, at a time when other business owners and residents can't even participate right now. I don't think this is a discussion we should be having when we have other issues.
Well, may- maybe that's what the discussion will exactly tell us, might we give it a couple of minutes, and, and just see what comes up?
Okay.
Cause I, I tend, you know, I'm tended to agree with you on that though, that I don't know, I don't know where we wh- what, 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 what do we wanna accomplish, what's the end game here? And uh, and um, and, and I, I agree with you though, but
I'm not su- I'm not sure, but you know, I'm not looking to accomplish anything for alcohol, alcohol regulations tonight, my mind is about the, what's going on right now as far as COVID nineteen, the stay-at-home order, and the businesses that have been ordered to shut down. That's what's my concern right now, is not placing or even having a discussion about putting regulations on businesses that aren't even open right now. It's like, you know, kicking somebody while they're down, I don't think that's the right thing to do.
Well, Mike, you wanna, wanna feed in on that right now, let's, let's, let's see what, what Mike has to say on this, and then I'll, then I'll ask the committee members.
Thank, thank you, Mayor, the seating staff's just uh, prepared to give an update. Uh, back in February, the mayor had asked uh, Councilmember Creo and uh, Councilmember Benton Court to meet and to meet with staff and possibly the public to just discuss the matter. And so, we did meet the first week of uh, of April. It was a little bit delayed because of uh, people being out of town, and then um, from some of the members that were gonna meet being out sick.
Right.
So, we did meet, and um, uh, Javier Flores from Pueblo de Salud was invited to the meeting, and it was productive, it was about two hours long. Our city manager was there, our city attorney's uh, office was represented and all attended, Mike Beahan, um, myself, and we uh, we covered a number of issues, and so, staff is making some progress. We did discuss, um, actually looking at our current uh, ordinance and addressing the, the corking issue of wine, that seems to be a little confusing for some people. Also about protecting our breweries, because they are important to our community. They are enjoyed, but also looking at that a little bit outside of our region, because there are some breweries that wanna participate in selling uh, their product here. Um, we also talked about a very important item, uh, of flavored alcohol drinks, the single sales, and the, the hard uh, liquor flavored type, single sales, so we're in agreement with that. And really, where I'm just here to report tonight, where we're continuing our work, is to look at uh, the number of outlets, the type of outlets, and how that relates to crime. Not much has changed since February, since I gave the presentation, in trying to make that connection of crime and alcohol. We've worked with the station, talked with the captain, so that's where we're at, and we're gonna continue to work on it, and um, we're not here tonight to make any hard recommendations or anything, but just to report, and if there's any input that um, we could receive, that would be fine.
Great.
Okay.
Alright, let me uh, uh, let me open up uh, um, who, who was kinda taking the lead at your meeting, was it uh, Ms. Benton Court or Mr. Creo, or?
I would say it, it was
Or are you gonna do rock, paper, scissors here?
Yeah, it was, it was a great, it actually was a great dialogue.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out who to call on here, who wants to jump in? You have to unmute your phone. No, I heard him a minute ago. Okay, was, was there, um, was there any feeling that, um, uh, I mean, I, I, I know the discussion at the last meeting leaned more towards taking a good solid look at the rules that we have, and enforcing the ones we've got. Uh, but uh, was there anything more that um, either uh, Mr. Creo or uh, Ms. Benton Court in their discussions here, uh, feel that any other direction uh, or, uh, that they need, or is anything else they want us to, to do on this, or?
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, got you now.
Um, so, at the last meeting, I had asked um, that we get a map done of where the density was of the alcohol outlets. And uh, apparently, the Pueblo de Salud submitted information to be mapped. But um, unfortunately, I've not seen any maps from Pueblo de Salud, and I haven't seen any of the city maps either, so I can't really make a comment on whether or not they are clustering in one particular part of the city, or if we have a high density, um, in in one end of the city versus another end of the city. So, basically, at the last meeting with uh, with Javier and uh, our staff, we, we were trying to get a bunch of data, and because of the coronavirus and everybody being so far apart and doing different things, I think it's just been really hard to get that data in, so we might have to to wait a little bit before we make a decision on whether or not we really are in a high density based on population, or if one particular part of the city has more than another, until we see the maps, there's really, there's no comment that I can make on that at all.
Yeah, that's kinda, that's kinda where I thought, Mr. Creo, what, what'd you have on that?
He must be driving through a dead spot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, Mr. Loa? Do you, do you have anything else you wanted to offer on this item? Uh, I, I'm not getting the sense that anybody on the council sees this as a, as a critical path issue we need to address in a uh, highly time-sensitive manner, is that, is that fair?
Yeah, I would agree with that, I, I think, given the current situations, uh, the current situation out there, I don't think this is a, a pressing issue that the city or where the council should be focused on right now. I think we need to be focused on restoring the quality of life back to the residents, reopening the city, uh, being focused on how we're gonna get the businesses back on track. Uh, public safety, public health, I think all those things right now, given the current situation, are things we should be focused on, not placing more regulations on businesses.
Yeah, well, I mean, it, it could, it, the recommendation could come out actually to put less regulation as well. So, it doesn't necessarily mean more, it's just a matter of, let's have a discussion about it, but, you know, I, I, I agree with you.
Why don't we ask Juan, he's here?
So, I did lose the call.
Right.
You're up, so.
We, we were, we were just getting ready to, to pass on this for the time being.
Let's give him a minute to get caught up.
Uh, we're just regrouping here, between the technology failures and shifting to in-person, we're just, we'll be back in just a second here, so. Do we have some music to play or something in the background?
Take a short break?
Yeah, let's just take a short break. Okay.
Oh, sure.
Gotta get some of that, that, that.